Pretty much cut them down.
Okay.
To every two weeks, almost everything came to a stop. Good morning, today's Thursday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty, we are here for a work session. Can you please stand for the pledge? Captain, can you please take one?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Moving forward, discussion items, we have quite a few today. First one is the Peconic Bay Medical Center, site plan amendments. Good morning Greg.
Good morning, Madam Supervisor, members of the Board, Greg Bergman, Town Riverhead Planning Department. What we have is a brief discussion about a site plan amendment application which was submitted by the Peconic Bay Medical Center. The amendment application proposes exterior site design changes to the approved site plan, which was approved by the Town Board. It was granted final approval in February of two thousand nineteen. That application at that time was to construct a three-story addition of approximately fifty thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet for an emergency room, cardiac catheterization, electrophysiology suite, and new ICU. The proposed amendments specific to this application include a number of changes which have already been constructed in the field. The changes consist of the following: changes in grade in for the eastern parking lot to slope away from the building into storm drains, which have already been inspected by the town engineer; to relocate an existing transformer further south and provide a clear area for a new covered canopy for the emergency room drop-off; provide a new higher-capacity domestic water service for the critical care pavilion; provide a new covered canopy for the emergency room; upgrade non-compliant sight lighting poles around the perimeter of the property; upgrade landscaping and provide ADA accessible, ADA access to the eastern parking lot via the installation of switchbacks and stairs. The canopy, which has already been constructed along the eastern side of the emergency room, has already been constructed. I had emailed a copy of the staff report, an image of that can be seen on page three. Because the location of this canopy is on the eastern side of the building, there was previously a electric transformer which was supposed to be in that location. That transformer was moved further south along the eastern side of the access driveway from Old Country Road. Again, a picture of that electric transformer can be seen on page three of the staff report. That electric transformer is screened from the Old Country Road right-of-way by existing vegetation and it is protected by concrete and steel bollards. With regards to the lighting plan, the lighting plan proposed to remove existing twenty-four-foot-tall non-compliant lighting fixtures along the northern property line and replace them with sixteen-foot-high town code compliant pole-mounted lighting fixtures. They comply with both the sixteen-foot mounting height as well as the three-thousand-degree Kelvin color temperature that's required by town code. There were some changes to the landscaping, although they're not specifically called out on plans. I would presume that they refer to the landscaping areas that have already been installed in the area of the retaining wall and the switchback areas. On page four of the staff report, I took a picture of just the switchback ramp that they needed to provide to meet the proper pitches and slopes required for ADA compliance and there's also a set of stairs which would lead from the eastern parking lot to the emergency room. There were some changes to retaining wall and drainage. As I stated, these drainage improvements had been inspected by the town engineer. In a memo dated May twenty-third, the engineering department commented on the placement of the binder course, the paving, and then they said there are no further engineering site inspections required. So the engineering department is satisfied with the drainage improvement setup and made. The plans were referred to the water district, as I understand, the increased domestic capacity water service has already been reviewed by the water district. At this point, I mean, these are very minor site changes, they don't negatively impact the functionality of the site in any way and it's noted, in effect, the Board is being asked to approve an as-built plans because these items have already been constructed in the field. At this point, staff recommends the Town Board assume lead agency for the purposes of secret review. This action is an unlisted action with coordinator review being optional and not recommended. Staff recommends that the Town Board grant administrative approval as the proposed site amendments are minor in nature and do not pose any significant negative impacts to the functionality of the site.
The amendments appear quite minimal in nature.
Correct.
You agree?
Correct, yes, no increase to the size of the building, strictly exterior site work.
Same footprint and so forth and, okay, any?
I have a question.
No.
Questions? On page four, figure three, where it shows the concrete, the ramp, the handicap accessible ramp?
Mm-hmm.
It appears as though there's a lip going from the concrete area into the asphalt area and to the ramp.
Yeah, you would go from the parking lot, you would go right into the ramp rather than, if you see it, you go up there. The parking lot is where the blacktop is, so if you were getting that.
On the bottom, at the bottom of the ramp?
No, at the top, top. See where the cone is?
Right, so you come off the asphalt, off the parking lot, then you come onto the concrete and as you approach the stairs, you would make a left turn to go down the handicap ramp, correct?
No, you would come in on the other side of that road cone and that barrier that's there now from the parking lot.
Okay.
Right into the ramp and then go down.
Okay, and that's where the handicap stalls are?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And there was a prior, a little bit farther to the south of these switchbacks and stairs, there was an existing ramp. I believe the pitch was just too great to be ADA compliant, so that's why they needed to construct a switchback to reduce that pitch and comply with ADA requirements.
Okay. Even though these had been done, they will have been approved now?
If the Board finds them, you know, finds the plans agreeable, I could prepare an administrative resolution. Again, this is not something that would require a public hearing, these are really just minor, minor field improvements that were done just kind of out of necessity.
I agree.
All right, any other questions from the Board?
No.
Glad to have it completed.
All right, I'll prepare a resolution for the next Town Board meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is Garrett Lake Ambulance Department.
Oh, you mean about the hospital?
Right.
Yeah, we should hear from them if they're there, if they have something to say, sure.
Yep.
I did hear.
They are, they can unmute themselves.
Did you guys want to add anything?
Simply thank you very much, we're excited to bring this project to fruition and I can't tell you how much of God sent it was to have the Corey Critical Care Pavilion available to us during COVID week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you to staff too, we appreciate how they always promptly attend to the applications. Your staff is very responsive, so thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Garrett? Garrett Lake?
Carol. Carol, you made copies of the water conservation for everybody, right? Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. You're busy, gonna be busy. Yes, the radios and equipment purchases.
Okay, so, you know, we're back here again trying to get the funds for the purchase radio. You know, once again, last week we had another communication failure at the Grumman Epcal Center where a child was failed to be medevac'd. So this is a, to us, a dire issue that needs to be immediately fixed. I know there were some questions that me and Bill Rothar have been talking about and Tim Hubbard about funds, so I think Bill Rothar was going to enlighten us if we.
Is he here?
Yeah, he's here, he has a, he's going to be able to explain.
Jody? The handouts, were they online?
Yeah.
Perfect.
I've sent everything, we sent everything to Devin and Esther to put it online, right?
We'll copy, we'll copy.
Great.
But it's online, we sent it to Devin and when we yesterday put it on the work session agenda.
Great.
Thank you.
Just a little background to all this. Garrett and the ambulance people came to us a few months ago regarding the need for new ambulances and they gave us a proposal for three different sets of quantities of radios and prices for same. And we kind of looked it over as a board and I think that the conversation at the time, we felt that the middle choice of, I believe it was forty radios for two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars was probably the best we could do at this point in time in working things out. So that's where we've kind of left it and.
And that was the, that was the option that still gave every person an individual radio, is that correct?
No, that was the option, it would get the most radios to the most people that we could do at this point in time. The third choice was giving to everybody and I forget what those numbers are Garrett, but they were.
I do remember.
Pretty substantial.
Yeah.
Garrett, I, one second.
I believe that number was in the five-hundred-thousand dollar range.
Right.
The number that we're looking at right now is in the two-fifty to two-sixty range and that does not give everybody a radio, so right now, everybody has a radio. We're kind of working away from that model of response since we have a lot more paid staff on now. Everybody's pretty much coming in and doing their shifts in the ambulance barn and not leaving, going home. The only people that respond from home are the chiefs and our ALS providers, paramedics and critical care AMTs. So with this number, what we're going to do is we're going to put a cache of radios in the ambulance barn, so when the crews come in, they'll sign out a radio, they'll have that for the day, their shift. The ALS providers will be, have take-home radios and our chiefs would have take-home radios. And we have a couple of them, already have them now, so.
Garrett, I have, this is going to allow for a faster, sorry, but this is going to allow for a faster response overall then?
Overall, yes, because, you know, the middle center, the middle part of our district is well-covered with radio communications. It's outskirts, it's Jamesport, it's, you know, all the Manorville parts of our district that we cover, even though it's Riverhead Town, but it's, we don't have any in Grumman's at all, we have zero communication. So Grumman's is just getting built up, you know, we have a lot of calls there, I think we did like three or four hundred calls there last year, so. You know, and now we have, you know, motorcycles going in there and crashing and all sorts of trauma there, so, you know. Defense Company gives us quite a few calls a year and we, if there's no police officer on scene, we have zero communication.
And certainly in the fall season is challenging because geographically with the traffic you've got from Jamesport to. It just gives you a broader range, right?
It's what?
The radios give you a broader range, it's not going to.
Yeah, so the.
Speed up, you're just gonna be able to communicate better, correct?
Yeah, so these radios are going to give us all the communications that we need. So right now, we have zero communications on the beaches in Riverhead, you know how many people attend the beaches here. We have zero communication in pretty much any of the outskirts in Jamesport, so the beaches on either end, so the bay and the sound. In Grumman's, we have zero, there's none, and pretty much on those outskirts too. So for the amount of call volume that we're doing and the nature of the calls in Grumman's, it's putting us in some pretty bad spots, especially when we had a child get critically hurt on a quad last week and we weren't able to medevac him out, so that's where the issue was. And the police officers were at a protest that was here in town, so we had zero communication. So we were able to get ahold of FRES, but by the time our people were able to get back to an ambulance that had the radio that could do this, it was already too late and we just ground transported to Stony Brook with a critically injured child, so that's the issue right now. And, you know, we never know where our vehicles are going to be. You know, sometimes where this incident occurred, the vehicle was quite a ways away from the paramedic who was there, so. You know, we're not always able to get back to the rig and leave a patient, so. That's why these radios that we're getting are dual-band, so they can, they can talk on the frequency we have now and they can also talk on the new frequency we're going to be using.
Garrett, I have two questions. The cost, does that include the charging stations?
Yes.
Okay, and concerning the, what's the timeline?
So the timeline, if you, if you, if we were to approve today, it would be about a month and a half to get these radios.
Okay, so pretty quickly.
And then if we.
Is there training involved or?
There is minimal though.
Minimal training and you have that all set, set up?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And it'd be about a probably, depending how much pressure we put on the county to get them programmed, you're probably looking at another few weeks to a month on that, so.
Garrett, you also mentioned the possibility that it's possible that we could pay for half of these out of this year's budget and they would allow us to pay for the other half out of next year's budget, if that would kind of work out better for things for, for us?
Yeah, so there was concern that with this purchase, we would deplete our fund.
Right.
And not be able to replace an ambulance and Mr. Rothar expressed concern about depleting that fund in case there was ever an accident, we all kind of agreed on that and so the way that Motorola is right now, if the, if we got the purchase in the next week or so, you can split because it's over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we can split out of this year's budget and then next year, when the new budget comes in, we can split the other half there and pay that off. If that helps with the funds.
Bill, will that help?
Not necessarily, I did get the report from Garrett showing when they need to replace the ambulances. So if you look at the spreadsheet I gave you, our fund balance is pretty healthy and does not go down. It's at its lowest at the end of the eleven-year projection that I gave you. So paying it now, paying it on January first is just a matter of cash. Interest rates are very low right now, so we're not making a lot on it. If there's some other discount we can get on them, pay it all now and get that discount because if you're paying one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars now versus six months from now at point-three percent interest, it's not significant enough. Maybe we have a better savings if we pay it all front, I don't know if that's built into the price or anything, so. We definitely can still do it that way, but it doesn't save us, you know. I wasn't sure how many ambulances we needed, so Garrett gave me a schedule, which is the second page of what I shared with you, of when ambulances and first responders needed to be replaced. And we've, they've done a lot of remounts lately, so you see all the heavy money is at the end of the schedule because that's when the ambulances come due, so that's when we tap into more of the fund balance. So that allows us to have, keep more fund balance over the first five to seven years of this projection. Having said that, we'll be at our low at the end in two thousand thirty, we'll be at about six-hundred thousand and change in fund balance. And this is all projecting, what Garrett did, he did project for increases in the cost of ambulances. I have not projected for increases in any revenues because my assumption is we have a two percent cap and regular spending is going to up two percent, so that's all going to be absorbed as we go forward. So the eighty-five thousand that we put away every year for vehicle, I left that, we may want to put more into that. It doesn't matter, it says it's reserved for vehicles or it's not reserved for vehicles. It's really just where we're classifying it, but the money's still going to be what the money is, okay? So whether we're reserving it for vehicles or not, that six-hundred-and-eleven thousand is our total fund balance in eleven years. So that two-fifty-six you see, twenty-twenty radios and barn plans is the two-fifty-six and the thirty-six for the plans for the new barn. And then going forward, you see where the vehicle replacements are. We budget eighty-five thousand dollars a year for vehicles and that's what builds up our fund balance. That's not enough for all the vehicles, but as said, we have, we do have fund balance right now to absorb that, so.
Recently, there was a concern with possibly the driveway having to be replaced up at their headquarters now on Osborne Avenue. And I believe the price tag was, from engineering, was somewhere around seventy-two thousand dollars to redo the driveway. Somebody had gotten injured up there, there's some, I guess, some dips and holes and such in the driveway from constant use from, from heavier rigs, so to replace it would be seventy-two thousand. I'm going to check with engineering to see if we can't do a temporary fix on that because to me, to drop seventy-two thousand dollars into that, if we're looking at possibly building a new headquarters, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me right now if we can repair rather than replace. So that might be an option too, where it would not be a big stranglehold of money that we need for something besides the radios, so we want to make sure the radios are first and foremost.
So I don't know if you have any other questions, I know one of the things is we're doing the study for the barn, so obviously that would follow with the purchase of a barn. I just did quick numbers on how much every million dollars costs us in debt. Originally, I was doing a fifteen-year debt payment, since it's a new barn and we don't really have to worry about replacing a roof in fifteen years or ten years, we could possibly go out twenty years for that. The shorter you go out, the better our bond rating is, but if it's a new building, you can get away with twenty years. Twenty years would be about eighty thousand dollars of debt service for every million and fifteen years would be ninety-six thousand dollars of debt service for every million dollars borrowed.
Preliminary estimates, put a price tag of about five billion dollars on a new headquarters. We, I know we were going to be looking to do some fundraising with the assistance of Peconic Bay Medical Center, some capital fundraising, so hopefully we can come up with a very good portion of that five million dollars, if not half. And so the cost is figured to be about two and a half million to the town, depending upon how well we do with the capital fundraising. But their barn is obsolete up there, it's overcrowded, it's not, it's not a good situation to be in, especially when you're dealing with volunteers that are given their own time and everything. We should be able to make it so they can be comfortable when they're, if they're sitting in-house on duty or, you know, they have the needs that they need for building for headquarters. So this is long overdue to get this going and we'll be working on that pretty hard in the future, in the very near future.
Tim, can you elaborate on the building itself? We don't own that property.
The property where we're looking for a new?
Yes.
I believe it was going to be done as a lease to us.
A long, long.
Like a ninety-nine-year lease of a dollar a year, whatever the cost may be. That was the idea of it, yes, that we wouldn't actually own the property, but we would be leasing it and we would have a very long-term lease on it, so if we were going to put taxpayer money into it, the long lease would be very similar to owning it.
Perfect.
And hopefully if we get Epcalsled, we'll be able to do some sort of ambulance and fire facility on the premises so that, there's a lot of people that work in the Grumman facility that are ambulance and firefighters that they could just jump in and apparatus and, and go and rescue or put out a fire, so. Hopefully that'll be part of the site plan applications that are going to be coming in once we, if we do sell Epcal.
Great.
Good.
Anyone else? Okay, moving forward.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, guys.
Moving forward, building planning, barriers for Main Street.
Yeah, so everybody has a picture, a copy of what these barriers would look like. They should have been included in everybody's packet. Carol, you have extra copies because Yvette said she doesn't have one?
You have one?
Yvette? And then I, we sent it over, so it's online also for everybody that's watching, correct?
Thank you. She's going to get it. Jeff?
Did you have one?
No.
I just gave her mine.
Okay. So a developer that I know said that he has enough of these that he could line both sides of Main Street if we ever did decide that we were going to allow outdoor seating on the street so that it would be one-way traffic through temporarily until the restaurants are fully open. So I just wanted to show the Board, this has a barrier, you can fill it with water and then it has the fencing that you can put on top. So it's a, it's pretty unique, I know Diggers was asking me.
Yeah, I gave her mine.
Diggers was asking me for a barrier because if we knew anybody, because the cost was, I think, three thousand dollars just for a twenty-five by twenty-five foot barrier, so I think this is a good alternative and once you start doing the research with the bid and with the downtown revitalization committee for the outdoor seating, then this would be a good way to barrier it off so that nobody would have to worry about a table being run into, so.
So far, the bid has expressed that they want to do it on Thursday night.
Yep, well then, you know, they would have to be filled up and moved away every Thursday night, which could be problematic, but.
I've had a few business owners complain that their only option being the cement block, that it wasn't aesthetically pleasing, so I think this is a good alternative certainly to the cement block.
Yeah, but if it's for one night, then it may not work. So they would donate these to us temporarily to use and just ask that we pay the truck costs to bring it here and unload them.
Who's donating them?
And who's going to pick them up?
But if we decide to go this route, then we'll bring him in and let him tell everybody where, I mean, he's got them, he can bring them here in a day, so.
So he'll come in and talk to us too, you're saying?
If he needs to, I mean, or we could just say we need a hundred of them and then we could pay for the truck and they'll drop them off, but.
No, I just wondered who it was.
Okay.
Okay.
This would go in conjunction with the bid is looking to do, obviously, we can't have a live on twenty-five this year, that's been canceled, so they're, they're looking at doing something called dine on twenty-five.
Great idea.
Where they would come in and we could close that down either completely or just for one-way traffic, whichever we deem to be better. And we could have specials and, you know, a big advertisement campaign to get people to come out to dinner on certain nights for these dine on twenty-fives to help our Main Street restaurants out.
Which I think is a great, I think it's a great starting place.
Yeah, absolutely.
Now, Jody, are you saying, you're saying that there would be one lane of traffic?
Well, that's what you're going to figure out with the bid and the downtown revitalization committee.
I mean, we were talking about.
And then you'll just let us know how many you need.
We were talking about closing off Main Street, you know, a section of Main Street, I think, completely, but on Thursday nights for the dine on twenty-five, but, okay.
Yeah, this is certainly a nice offer anyway. Too many people donating.
You can't turn this down, right?
It's nice to know somebody in the construction business.
No pun intended. I think it's a great idea, thank you, Jody, for looking into that. And anything else?
That's it on that.
Moving forward, water district, water conservation and landscaping. Giglio, Mancini, and Pudenti, can we get Pudenti?
Hey, you're up, is Frank here? Okay, great, thanks, Frank. You don't want to tell us anything to start off? You don't want to?
Well, this is, we discussed it last week at work session, so this is something that I started working on last year with Anne Marie and looking at other townships and what they're doing and seeing is we are really in a jam right now with our water consumption.
Great.
And we're almost at, I mean, we're at seventeen, pumping seventeen-point-two million gallons on peak days and last year during the peak, the middle of the summer, we were pumping nineteen million gallons and our capacity is twenty million gallons to pump, so we need to figure out ways to conserve water and, you know, we'll be talking about that in the future as far as with the liaison to the water district and figuring out whether or not we do odd days and, and for odd number homes, odd number homes, odd days, even number homes, even days of the month, just to conserve water. The highest consumption right now is in Wading River, so right now, we just ask you to be mindful that you're not watering two and three times a day and that when you are watering, you're watering at a good time in order to, so that the soil holds the water.
And, and we did talk about this and I'm glad that you're bringing it up. And people have talked to me about seeing, you know, businesses even irrigating when it's raining.
Yeah, so this will address that because it also includes rain sensors for new site plans and also, you know, efficiency watering and automatic controllers and.
Sounds, and, and just as people have been saying to me, a lot of the leaders of other towns even have been saying it's not even so much water quality now, it's water quantity, quantity, it's hard to talk with this last one. That is a concern, so I am very interested to see this.
Well, the spike in water also has to deal with refilling pools this time of the year, so that, you know, that's a one-time adjustment, but certainly going forward, conservation has to be at the forefront of the water district's efforts, yeah?
Yeah, so we spoke last week about the zero scape and Anne Marie and I have been working on this, like I said, since last year and we had a meeting this week and sat down with the water district superintendent who said that this will also help his.
Did it stay on?
His applications with the New York State DEC as far as water conservation and that the town is being aggressive and moving forward and trying to fix a problem, so.
Showing good faith to the DEC.
I know the environmental committee will be happy. Well, I know the, I know the Environmental Committee will be happy.
Yeah, so we talk about irrigation efficiency. We talk about, you know, runoff and overspray, low water-using plant, low-volume irrigation for mulched areas because that can retain the water for a longer period of time than grass. And, and this is for new projects. This is not for existing projects. However, it does include in here that if one of the box stores on 58 were to be redeveloped, that if they were, they were doing a development project that was more than 25% of their current area, that they would be required to change their landscape design for this conservation plan. Frank here? So there are water conservation landscape requirements. It's really drought-resistant plantings and you can still have a green lawn, but it's just going to be limited based on the size of the property. So I'm presenting it today. I would like you all to read through it and then hopefully, we can put it on again for next week. And if everybody's satisfied with it, we can schedule a public hearing at the following meeting.
Like I said last conversation, even the turf grass industry, we're on the cutting edge with some of the tall fescues and the fine fescues. And we're seeing a high demand for these, you know, these grasses that are less dependent on water, so.
Right. Where did he go, Meredith? I don't know. I feel like at some point, we have to rethink front lawns.
Well, I think that.
So who let Anne Marie?
I think.
Oh, sorry, Frank.
So, I mean, I have to admit to the town board, I probably should have completed drafts a little more time.
You have to look up to the mic.
Yep. For the councilwoman, I think between Epcal and COVID, it was my delight. Because as she said, this has been addressed by the councilwoman for months and months. So anyway, I think this approach, actually, if you read the totality of it, is a wonderful first step. I think, you know, at her request, it's not onerous on any new project, any new site plan, any new development because what it's really looking for is 15% of, I always say the word wrong.
Zero scape.
Zero scape. And really for the sprinklers to be either low-volume irrigation or to have rain sensor controls and devices. And it encourages actually capturing rainwater and utilizing that free water, which in turn, not only assists in not putting the drain on our system. And when I say drain, that includes even the infrastructure. Because if you think about it, the more we pump, the more pressure we're putting on our equipment, our pipes. At the same time, we have an inability or a risk of not meeting the demand. And all, everything in here actually will assist that. At the same time, it actually is wonderful for our aquifer because it's a recharge mechanism for it. So I think it's a wonderful first, conservative first step. And the councilwoman has requested and Frank will continue to work with the DEC. They're extremely, extremely supportive of this. At the councilwoman's direction, they've been provided with the draft. She wanted them to have a comment. I'm very confident because this is really new. This is not typical of towns and counties throughout New York. This is really going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, Frank, one of the first ever municipalities to be on the book with something like this.
Which is the same as what we did with the sanitary systems and the watershed areas where when people were coming to put second stories on their houses and they were still keeping the same number of bedrooms, the load was a lot greater into the antiquated sanitary system. So we worked with the Health Department, who was going to review the applications for us, even though it wasn't a requirement under Article 81 from the Health Department. So this is the same thing. We have gotten emails back from the New York State DEC. They're very excited about it. And it's another trail basing, trail basing piece of legislation that hopefully, other towns will follow along with.
Now, now, Jody, if, if, I would like to be able to forward this draft on to the Environmental Committee.
Sure, if you have it in email form, I can email them out to it. I know they would, I know they would like to see that.
And Anne Marie, just, just so I clarify, this is for current, I mean, this is for new construction and new businesses?
Except the fact that.
Unless it's an older building.
An existing residential.
And commercial.
And commercial building were to expand to the residential 25% square footage or more or improve their lot by 25%, then this would come into play. So in other words, if you had a home expanding their footprint by 25%, what does that mean? That translates to 15% of their yard would be transferred into zero scape. Just 15%. And unlike, so the councilwoman had me research other states. And unlike other states like California and Colorado and Texas, we're not creating or looking to create rock gardens as in place of lawns. This is 15%, which is really drought-tolerant planting. It, you know, it, it's utilizing mulch to retain the water. So it's really minimal. It's effective. It'll continue the look that I believe you as legislator wants for all your different communities.
Now, is this something that at some point, we could expand into current businesses? Just because I've.
We are.
It's spoken with, Frank and I have spoken about some businesses that, not to name any, but that have, that are, that use a lot of water.
It, it's in here. So if it comes back where they're going for an amendment to their site plan, then they would be required to follow under these guidelines.
But what if they don't come back for an amendment to their site plan?
Well, I.
I mean, I understood that whole piece of it, but what if they're not adding on or changing their site plan? What if they're just a business? Can we expand to that at some point?
Potentially in the future.
They haven't approved site plan.
Legally, I would have to look at that because you have an approved site plan with approved conditions, declarations and covenants.
Based on the current code?
Correct. So I would have to research whether or not we can extend our arm onto those pre-approved.
Right.
Site plants that they're vested in already and that they adhered to the planting schedule at the time and invested their monies in that. Do I think it's possible? Yes. Did we grandfather other things like houseboats and things like that? Yes. But honestly, I would have to research it.
Well, I think this is certainly a great starting point. And, I mean, we might even be able, some businesses might even do it voluntarily.
Yeah, amen.
You know, if they're environmental, you know, want to help the environment, so.
I'd like to just ask Frank to come up and if you could just explain how.
The podium.
If you could explain how this impacts your, the way DEC envisions our town going forward as we, you know, forge a relationship.
Well, like you said, it's, it's, this is critical. This water resource is something that we own. And a town like us, we have not only the only town on Long Island that operates its own public water system exclusively, but we also have tremendous agriculture in our, in our town. So managing our groundwater resources is going to be critical. And this is really moving the ball forward. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Giglio and Deputy Town Attorney Anne Marie because they really spearheaded this and I played a role in it, but not nearly as much as they did. The way this helps us is we are being, not just us, but the DEC realizes Long Island salt source aquifer is stressed and we all have to play a role in managing it. It's critical for us to do it. It's more important for us than anyone else. I'll give you some background information on how much irrigation impacts the district. We pump 2.34 billion gallons of water a year. And 2/3 of that water, this is for the entire year, is used for irrigation. And almost all of that occurs during the summer months where 75% of our pumping is irrigation. So right now, 75% of the water we produce is getting used to irrigate stuff. That equates to every person in Riverhead using 540 gallons a day. We all know people aren't using that much water at home, so this is really getting used for irrigation. We're seeing, despite COVID and stuff this year, we're seeing tremendous demand in the system this year, more so than we did last year. Last year, our peak pumping day in June was 16 million gallons of water a day. So far, this, this past Sunday into Monday, we pumped 17.2 million gallons. So we're still pumping like crazy. Last year, our peak pumping day was 19 million gallons a day. We're only 1.5 million gallons away from that and it's only June 18th. So this is why we've got to be aggressive about this and get a hold of it and really manage it. Because we can absolutely manage it and these are the tools we need to do it.
You know, Frank, you bring up a good point about the agriculture. I mean, we, we have to protect our agriculture, so obviously, we want to make sure we have enough water to keep our agriculture up and going.
Yeah.
Another important reason that we conserve.
Yeah, it's all the same resource that we use. We all depend on it. So, and, and it's, the, the system is one that when you make a mistake, it's not easy to back out of. If you cause water intrusion to an area, you don't just fill the aquifer back up and start again. So this is the type of thing where we got to get ahead of it, manage it appropriately so we don't find ourselves years from now in a problem that we can't get out of. And I think these are the exact tools that we do this with. And it's not a tremendous burden on the residents of Riverhead. I think this is very fair. I also think because we're talking about a rate increase with the district, that it's the perfect time to implement such a thing because we want to give residents a tool to mitigate their increased cost of water, which by and large is fairly cheap compared to what else you pay. But it's no secret that the regulations are pushing us to a point where we're going to charge people more water to use less water simply because there's not that much water out there and it's tremendously expensive to produce. Because even though it's used for irrigation, we're treating it to the strictest ground drinking water standards in the country. So we don't get to separate it. There's not a separate irrigation system or anything. This is all drinking water.
And it, it plays an important role in the recharge of the aquifer, so.
Yeah. Some of the components of the plan, that, that's really great in that it's not only the water we take out, it's the water that we enable to recharge back into the aquifer because it's, it's a dynamic system. So we're taking stuff out. We need precipitation and any excess irrigation that the plants don't use to be returned back into the aquifer. So it's, it's really well done and it covers so many bases. I'm just thankful that you guys have taken this seriously because the town's going to benefit, but, but the district is going to benefit tremendously. And we're in a position where we need to do that.
Thank you, Frank.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We're all proud of our water department.
So we'll email this out to everybody and then you can share it with whomever you'd like.
Okay. I just have a couple of statements in this regard. This is a well-researched proactive model. There's no cost to the taxpayers. It applies to every village, every town and throughout every, every state. This appears to be a very doable project. And I want to thank Councilwoman Giglio for thinking outside the box, taking the lead, making sure you covered all your bases, you researched. And I'm very proud that we can, we can move forward with this.
Thank you.
I think Frank touched on it a little bit. It's, it's the one utility that we kind of take for granted. You turn a knob and you have it. And when the bill comes, it's like, eh, it's not much of a bill, you know? But when you really think about it, if, if you want to conserve, you almost got to think of it as liquid gold. When that water's running for no purpose at all. Like my kids, when they were younger, would brush their teeth and leave the water running the entire time. No purpose. Turn it off, you know? Little things add up over time and especially from the residential section, there's a lot of things we can do to curb our use. And going to the irrigation pumps for businesses like we've done for commercial applications where they have to have their own well to do irrigation helps, but it's still taking water from the aquifer. So it's, it's things we all have to become aware of and we can all make a difference in this. We just have to think a little bit and, and change our ways a little bit for the better.
And you know, Tim, thank you for bringing up children because actually, when I was teaching, people came in. We had people that would come in and teach the children about not letting the water run and, and teaching the kids about water conservation. So we need to make sure the adults know it as well.
Yeah, and when you're washing your car, you, if you wash it on the lawn, then it will recharge. If you're washing your car, instead of letting the hose run, put a nozzle on so that the water is not running continuously. So just best management practices for conserving water.
They all add up.
Actually, when I was working in, I worked in Haiti for a while and they brought their cars to the river and washed them in the river. It was kind of cool.
I don't know that the Pecanic estuary program.
By the way, I am not recommending the Pecanic estuary.
Okay.
Anyway.
Moving forward, highway speed tables on North Country Road, Hubbard, Hagamilla, or Woodson? Someone want to get?
The assessors first because they're here, right?
Yeah, let's use the assessors.
Oh. Okay.
You guys can handle it, right?
Yes, assessors.
You gals?
Nearmap imagery software. Is Mason here?
One there, one there.
Yep.
You guys have questions about Nearmap or?
You want to explain what it is to us?
Um, yes, it's an imagery system.
Okay.
And I believe the cost is $7,200 for the year. And that's unlimited use. I'm not sure of the cost of the current program we have, but I know the images are only up until 2011. And Nearmap does three to four passes a year, so I do have some examples. And am I correct in saying that with the, you know, the town is always having a problem getting cars and the assessors are driving around checking completion of projects on building permits that were issued? So this will assist with that so that you can see from the imaging what the completion of the project is to determine whether or not it goes on the rolls at an increased amount based on the completion of the project, correct?
Yeah.
Did you hand those out? Did Devon get those for the media?
I just printed them because.
Yes, okay, so we'll put them online.
Is all the same?
Yes, it's all the same house. And it shows the different dates at the bottom. This one, I don't have the date.
So maybe they want to have a quick look and then I'll go run it posted?
Do you have copies for all of us or is it one copy?
Just one set.
Right.
Okay, so I would put it up online first and then maybe make copies for all of us and then we can come back to it.
That's good.
We'll come back to it.
You're telling it to us verbally, but we need to get it up for the.
Yeah, so whenever a document is put forward at a work session of town board, we should have it, if we can, have it before. And it goes online with the agenda.
Okay.
She'll get it up there quick.
Yep, she's, she's pretty quick.
Do you have any other questions about it?
Well, my concern was Big Brother and actually looking in people's yards and determining whether or not they are, we're going to use it as a sword or we're going to use it as a tool. So those were my concerns.
Okay. We only look at the properties that have permits, open permits. And like pools, for instance, it makes it very easy to see if a pool is taken down or put in. I know I was out with Laverne one time and we couldn't, if people aren't home, you can't go over their fence and.
No, what you want to do with barking dogs, right?
Right. So we were able to come back to the office and say, oh, the pool's gone because we have images from, you know, the summer to the fall and we can see that it was taken down, so then we can take that off their tax roll.
And Meredith, it's my understanding that if we sign up for it, that all the departments can use it.
Yes, it's unlimited use too, so.
That's, that's wonderful.
I mean, the police can use it, code can use it. Yeah.
One Big Brother offer?
Yes, please, because we adopted a resolution years ago that said that we weren't going to be using global positioning to, as a sword for our residents, but. Go ahead, Bob.
All right. I really don't have time to spend on the computer looking for violations. So let me say that at the outset. However, when I do get an email from a constituent or somebody complaining, it would be a great tool. I would use it in conjunction with that and we would use it as an aid to assist us. Mason showed me the program and it's a great program because what you can do is pull up multiple years, looking at the same piece of property and drag them and see physically the changes right away. So it's a great tool to see the activity that's happened from year to year or from flyover to flyover. So it's, it's tremendous.
So it's going to be complaint-driven or it's going to be to look at initial building permits that are open or demolition permits that are, that exist to make sure that.
permits that are open, or demolition permits that are, that exist, to make sure that the structure was demolished, correct?
I could, you know, for assessors, they'll speak for themselves. From my standpoint, I can tell you, we're going to use it as a, as a tool when we get complaints. We really don't have time to go out and look for violations. We have enough of them coming in as it is. As an aside, there's plenty of case letters that says that this is probably not impermissible, because as you know, over the years, the government has used planes to fly over locations, such as looking for marijuana crops.
Right.
And that has been found to be totally legal. So from a U.S. constitutional standpoint, and from the Supreme Court standpoint, it's authorized. I mean, the same, the same issue comes up with drones, but I'm, I'm telling you, we're not going to do that.
I look at it as illegal search and seizure.
Oh, it's not.
It's only authorized if you have.
It's not.
It's only authorized if you have a legitimate reason. So if somebody gets a complaint that they're growing marijuana in a farm.
Right.
Then the government can come in and do the search.
Right.
And, and we have to protect, you know.
When, when the whole drone thing was coming forth, there's a great, uh, study that was done by one of the large schools, and, and it's a large detailed, uh, uh, writing about it. So I can't think of another word right now. I can share that with you if you want to read it. It was, it was a real interesting read, because it went through everything that's going on historically, with helicopter flyovers and other things and.
For safety reasons.
Yeah, and it's not only marijuana, it's with, you know, other things with, with oil tanks and, and, and all across. I mean, there was one with, I think it was Dow Chemical, one of the cases, that came out of California, uh, which was a, a major case that went up the ladder. And I can't recall whether the court found that that was improper or not, but they set protocols for it. Um, you know, uh, instances where, um, municipalities or law enforcement agencies have set up large trucks along a private hedge, and to look over the top of a private hedge, is that impermissible or not? I mean, what's within your normal view? But again, getting back to the Big Brother thing, I, I know, I, I can speak from my office, we're not going to use it as a sword. We're not going to use it to go out and find people. We're going to use it when we, for example, I got a, an email yesterday about something that was going on that may be illegal from a constituent. I really didn't know where they were talking about it. Uh, and when I looked at our two thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen map that's on our GIS, I couldn't find anything. So, and, and then the constituent wrote back and said it happened last fall. So I can go on Google, and I'm going to get the same results on Google, but this is, is a, is a more sharper tool to assist us, and, and we're going to go out and do the visual, and we're going to do the, what we need to do to make our case.
How long has Nearmap been in business? When did they start doing the flyovers, the aerographics?
Um, I believe in our area, some possibly about two thousand and eleven.
Meredith.
Meredith, great.
Go.
Up to the mic.
I think we can go back to two thousand and sixteen. Because that's not really going to help us with pre-existing non-conforming. I mean, we're not going to be able to really look back that far into the history, but I, I want to see the resolution, and I'd like the old resolution that we adopted, uh, back in, I think it was two thousand twelve or thirteen? No, it was after I was on the board that we adopted it, where, Bob, you might recall, where we said that we weren't going to be using the GPS as a, um, as a sword to go after people. We were going to be using it for pool safety and things of that nature, so.
I like the fact that it, it makes the departments more efficient. If it's going to expedite, uh, permits, or if it's going to expedite, uh, code enforcement issues, I like that as a tool. I think that this.
Me too.
Yeah.
But I don't like them going to Catherine's house and saying, oh, just out of the blue, you know?
Of course, of course.
Catherine had, she didn't have a shed, now she has a shed, and we send her a notice of violation, because we happen to notice that it changed from one year to the next.
She would never do.
Oh, actually, is that Catherine watering in her pajamas outside?
So I, I, I get it that it's for efficiency in the departments, that they don't have to take a town car and go out and do all these inspections, but at the same time, unless we have a built, open building permit or a violation notice that we are researching, I don't want it to be used as a sword.
Two, two things, as far as the resolution that was adopted by the board, I think I have that saved. I will see if I can find it and shoot it out to everybody.
Twelve or thirteen.
I, I remember it. Um, I think Leroy was still in the building department at the time, if I recall, so I think I have that.
Okay.
Um, and as another issue, and this was just brought to my attention, it also allows us to do, uh, better work in regard to stormwater and stormwater issues, because it tracks that to an extent too. So if we have an issue with stormwater, whether it be drainage issues, SWIP issues, we can use it as a tool in that regard too. I just wanted to mention that.
Great, as long as the privacy safeguards are in place.
I'll, I'll share that resolution with you guys, so you see it.
That's how I'm concerned. Perfect.
Just in terms of payment for the program, um, the, the public needs to know that the assessor's office saves us tons and tons and tons of money every year. That's their job, understandable, but they're, they're very good at their job, and they've taken some stuff on in-house that they do, that have saved money that we used to pay outside agencies to do. So they've saved us a lot of money over the years, so for a seven thousand dollar purchase, I am completely in favor of that. I, I think they're, it's going to assist them, and it's going to help them actually, make more money for us.
It's a quarter of a million dollars a year that they save us in the grievances.
Okay.
And doing the in-house.
Assesses, chapter ninety-two legislation, Cannonbaum and Mason, huh? Is he here?
But do we have that in here and up on the?
I emailed everybody.
Yeah, it's in here.
So seven is up online?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good to go.
This started out as a New York City, um, related, um, bill, but the sponsor felt that this bill should apply statewide at local option, which provides for the deadline for filing any applications for, uh, and new, and renewal applications for two thousand and twenty, uh, to be extended to July fifteenth date, provided you adopt a local option. Currently, we have two.
Yes, to speak up.
Currently, we have two applications, um, that were filed on March twelfth. Well, one was filed, I'm sorry, uh, March third, and the other one was filed on March twelfth. Uh, that would qualify. Other than that, we have no other applications this would apply to.
Okay.
Great.
Short and sweet.
Yeah, very short.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No.
Thanks, Will.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, highway speed tables, North Country Road.
Diane, you could start, Frank. Well, while we're waiting for Geo, I'll announce again, because I do it every time, asking people to do the survey for the pattern book. It's, um, online. Um, we extended it a week. It's a lot of questions, but if it's questions that's really struggling for you, you can actually skip a question if you have to. Anyway, I hope everybody does it. It's right on the town website. It's a way for everybody to weigh into what happens downtown. You guys all do it, I hope?
I did, yes.
Thank you, Tim.
I did, I did.
Julie.
Not yet.
So just as a background, I think this is the, uh, this is the issue pertaining to Parker Road over in Wading River.
Yeah, the old Parker Road, North Country Road.
Yeah.
Uh, it's in the area, particularly, this particular incident is in the area of the Consella Farms.
Right.
Um, where there's farm equipment that comes out on the roads and goes from the barn to the farm and back and forth, and.
Is Hagamilla here?
Tim, is this what we were originally talking about possibly closing Off Street, or that was another thing?
It was the same day of the discussion, but this is a different matter.
Yeah.
And just to shout out, they have the giant strawberry.
This is, it's been, it's been years of trying to really slow down traffic on North Country Road. Because it's kind of a straight shot through there, and it's, it's a cutoff to avoid going through the light at, at Wading River Manor and twenty-five A, if you want to go down, uh, downtown Wading River. So it's, it's fairly heavily used, and it's been an issue for quite some time. We've done speed enforcement up there over the years. Uh, we put the, the signs, uh, the portable speed signs there at, at various times, and that seems to help, but as soon as they're gone, it's, everything's right back again. So the, we had conversations several months ago, I know Geo was here and the chief was here, and we talked about, uh, speed tables, speed bumps, and speed hops. And doing research on this, we, we originally, we were talking about speed tables is what we thought would be the best fit for there. But I got to tell you, af- after reading and researching, um, there's problems with speed tables, and, and the problems can be from snowplowing, to motorcycles, to bicyclists, to pedestrians, and I think it, it becomes iffy, and, and all the thing, all the background I read on it, it's almost becomes a liability to the town. If you put something out there to slow down traffic, and God forbid a motorcycle hits it and goes airborne and there's an accident, the town's going to be liable for that. So most municipalities, from what I've read, are getting away from speed tables, speed bumps, or any, any such thing. There are various other avenues that can be taken. They're expensive, and they include putting different obstacles in the roadway, so you would have to go around it, plantings, berms, different things like that. That's more, though, for a neighborhood, like, say, a gated community where you would do something like that, where your traffic is normally pretty slow. This is a posted thirty mile an hour zone, but I, I assure you, thirty is not on most people's, uh, speedometer when they go through there.
I, if I could.
Go ahead.
Uh, I'd just like to talk to the safety issue, especially near farms.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with farm equipment going out onto the road, of course, everything, every farm piece of equipment should have its slow-moving vehicle, and it should have lights and everything like that. But this is a real concern. We have farms over on twenty-five in Calberton, and I almost lost, uh, an employee last year who was rear-ended, uh, in the morning, because somebody was in a rush, and he was in a piece of equipment with lights and with the, you know, necessary signage, and, uh, we, we almost lost him. So this is a really, uh, dangerous thing. Uh, we have to learn to live in our agricultural community and slow down a little bit, but in this instance, we really have to find a solution, because, uh, especially with that farm in particular, it's a tight area, so a lot of times, he'll just have to go out into the roadway.
Turn and.
And make his turn. So knowing this farm very well, this is a specially dangerous situation.
Yeah, and they have them in other, like Port Jefferson, they have them, um, on the way to the train station, which most people are in a rush, and they have the speed tables there. And when Mr. Consella had requested information from Port Jefferson or from the town, they had said that they hadn't had any incidents, so.
Right.
I don't know. I, I think that we have more of a chance of a tractor getting hit than we do a motorcycle, like jumping a speed table, as long as the notification is as far in advance as it's recommended.
And thanks for bringing up that point, Frank. We were just talking about it yesterday, because I know Johnzel Nicky on Sound Avenue had a real scare, because during the traffic season, people are trying to go around the tractors.
Mm-hmm.
In an unsafe way. Um, I had asked last time, but I just, but I, I've seen people use the three D speed bumps. What about those? I think that's in here.
You knew about them, right? The three D?
They use them basically as crosswalks.
Right.
Can you come up to the mic?
Did you tell me that they were expensive or something? I know we had.
No, I don't think, I don't think they would.
We had talked about that before.
I don't think they would be that expensive. They're just painting on the, on the.
Right. Are they considered effective?
That, I don't know.
Something to think about.
Right.
From what I've read and researched, um, the speed bumps do slow the traffic down, but there's a price to pay for using them, and that's the liability for.
Yeah, we have them.
Yeah, don't.
And, and that's not, as much as I originally thought this was the idea and the way to go, the more I read into it, the more I'm a little bit leery to put the town in that position. But I think a combination of other things, such as the three D speed bumps, combined with, um, the one handout I gave you here with the speed signs that are permanently posted, solar-operated.
Mason, we're done.
You see as, you'll see if, if you watch traffic, whenever there's a, the portable sign is up and, and it shows your speed, it's always a tap of the brakes and they slow down. These are in a lot more rural areas. Uh, Vermont, I see them all over the place, and they, they really do seem to work. And I think that in conjunction, in conjunction with a three D speed bump, may be our best option to, to quell the traffic. There's so many studies.
Right.
On traffic calming out there. But this, I think for this particular usage, for this area, I think that might be the best mix.
What was the solution, Tim?
It's going to be a solar-powered permanent sign.
Right.
Stating your speed, along with the three D speed bumps painted on the road.
Right, or a rumble strip or something.
Or a rumble strip, right, right.
Is that the one that D E, DOT uses? Do they go into the pavement?
Cautioning them.
So the rumble strips usually does heavy paint that's put on the road.
Oh, okay.
That causes a vibration.
It's not actually cut out.
No.
Section of.
You could do that, you could do that too, actually.
Yeah, I think that's a really great, and I know Geo has problems with the expansion of the water that sits in it and cracking, but, uh, I think that might be a really good solution too.
Geo, what do you think about the three D versus the rumble stick? Come up to the mic. Sorry, sorry, chief.
Chief knows how I feel about this, after being a law enforcement officer years. I say, I'll give you a, for instance, go over to Southampton on Montauk Highway, just past the Indian Reservation. When any of you go through there, do you, any of you go over twenty miles an hour? You know why? Because it's respect, and they write tickets. The three D deal could work. I don't like the speed humps. I definitely won't sign for it, because if something happens there, I'm not going to court, I'm not going to depositions. If you want that, that's on you, but, um, the three D deal could possibly work. The only reservations I have about the signs that light up that tell you your speed, um, they're quite a bit of money, and also, people do damage to them. That's my only concern, uh, in that area, unless you can have somebody look out for it. But, um, trying that, I think the most effective way is, like I said, you sit there with your radar gun, and you write tickets until you get to.
Geo, that's the third, the third spot that would have to be put into this, and would have to be known as spot. Same way with, um, Montauk Highway in Quogue. You know you slow down when you go through there, because there's usually a cop sitting around the corner writing tickets.
So why can't we do that here?
Well, because Quogue maybe doesn't have the crime level that Riverhead, not the crime level, but the busy calls that Riverhead has, so it's a little easier for them to do more enforcement. We can, and we should, and I'm sure the chief will, will, will address that, but, um, I think the combination of those three things are what is going to work. This is a, it's a serious problem, and I feel really bad for Mr. Consella, because I, I know what it's like when you're on the road like that, and you've got to come out, and he can't see you all the time coming out, and people are zipping through, uh, people and he can't see you all the time coming out and people are zipping through, uh, people fly down that road. So, I think we have to, you know, if we do use the combination of these three things, I think it might be enough to.
It's a possibility. I know one of my guys got hit on Sound Avenue mowing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's why I have the safety truck, a guy that just sits behind the guy mowing all day.
And I think, um, if we had a little bit more law enforcement in the area at certain times, that would, and just write tickets.
I mean, like I said, I don't see how Quogue and Southampton and those certain areas, and we all go through there.
Right, you know.
Don't go over twenty-two miles an hour because they're going to get you.
Right.
And, you know, that's how I always believe it should be done. But if you want to try that, I don't have a problem trying those things.
Yeah, I had talked to you, Chief, we had talked about this, um, the street right in front of James Court Community Center, about Washington.
Yeah.
We had talked about that last year. I, that's where I first started talking about the three D speed bumps. If they work here, maybe we can look there. And you had sent law, remember last year, then you sent more law enforcement out there for.
Right. I think, I think the three D painting.
Mm-hmm.
I wouldn't put that on a, a main thoroughfare at a stop sign or something like that. As I say, in conjunction with the crosswalk, I think they work. If I was a driver and I was coming down the road on an open road and all of a sudden I see what looks like blocks in front of me, I'm going to jam on the brakes. You know, really jam on the brakes.
Right.
So, I don't know how that would affect other cars traveling on that road, too. So, I've only seen them in, in conjunction with stop signs, crosswalks and stuff like that, so. Um, but our town engineer did recommend that we, uh, use a, the radar sign, uh, speed sign that lights up with you, with your speed. So, he did recommend that. He did not recommend a speed table on Parker Road or North, North Country Road. So, and we did, we did, we were up there constantly in the fall and I think we did have a positive effect on reducing speed by writing tickets. However, that COVID came along, so that changed a little bit. So, uh, once we're out of this COVID period, we'll be back up there writing tickets again.
Okay.
Great. These, the, the cost of the speed signs, the permanent ones are between twenty-seven hundred and forty-three hundred dollars, depending upon what you get. They make them for hardwiring, they make them for solar, they make them for battery use. Uh, I would recommend solar. It has a backup battery in it and I think it's also a little more, less expensive to install because you have to get power to it if you're going to hardwire it. So, that would be the way to go.
I did have the engineers already look at getting power from the poles above, so.
Great.
So, we, we need to take some action on this and, and kind of get it going.
Put in the resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Sounds like a good, good plan. Since Geo's here, I got to do a shout out because I got the grand tour of the highway department yesterday. I've been there before, but yesterday Geo and Mike really gave me a great tour. I cannot believe how organized it is out there. Good job.
Something we should all do is ride with one of the plow trucks.
I was thinking, I need these guys to help me organize my basement.
Snowplow.
Yeah, I met, I met him up at the Manor Road facility as well. And I, honestly, I have farms on that road. I never knew that that was there. And it's such a big piece of property and, uh, such good potential with that property.
Yep. What you should really do is spend some time in, uh, his office when they're doing the snow plowing and people are complaining that they can't get out or when are you coming to me? And with the tracking system that we have on the trucks now, they, Geo has a better idea as to how soon they're going to be to any particular neighborhood. But that's interesting, being in the highway, uh, office when it's snow plowing time and people want to know when they're getting plowed out.
More interesting being in the truck.
I know, I want to take the ride then.
Up on Sound Avenue when those drifts come through.
He had Pete Blazel in there taking, uh, film one, one year, right?
If you do that, you can't come for an hour, so you have to stay for the whole shift.
The whole shift.
All right. If I've got bagels, I'll stay for the whole shift. And you got to wear your knee brace so that when you're plowing, you feel the pain of it on your knee and on your back, then.
Bloodlust.
Yeah? Thank you all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Chief?
Hey.
You have the, uh, monthly report? May please fix that. That went up to right?
Yeah.
I hear a fight.
We have it, Chief.
Yeah, I said, it's a brewing, I'm going to tell you. You have this, too?
Don't scare everybody in thinking that we're getting something that isn't up online.
Don't worry, it is online. It's on the website already.
I'll take one.
It was emailed to them also.
Okay.
All right. You're on top. Thanks, thank you.
We are daily zooming now.
We're good.
A little rolling.
Got some, can you go? Want one?
Yeah, thank you. No, I had it. I'm sorry, Chief. Does anyone else need one? I got some of the junk here. How are you guys doing in your little?
Okay, so you have the May monthly report in front of you. Uh, still a little low as far as numbers are concerned, but we are making our way back up to where they should be, so.
Domestics are way up.
Well, I wouldn't say way up, but they're up, yes.
If you did it on a percentage basis, yes, they're way up.
That would also be like saying, like, the hospital has six cases of COVID, so, and they're up a hundred percent. So, it's, it really, they have to look at the numbers before you start saying percentages and stuff like that.
I mean, isn't that a concern across the country, though, right now? With everybody being quarantined, Chief, that their, our domestics have been up?
Right, that they said they would increase. But we did see a decrease, actually, I think, the first two months and now they've increased. Last month was not as much as this month and this month's a little more. So, hopefully, we're all getting out there and that'll go away soon.
See, the bail reform has kicked in numbers. Prisoners detained.
Right.
Fifteen this year for this month, or for May.
Yeah, I know, I don't know that I would blame that all on bail reform. I think that has a lot to do with the COVID situation, too, so. A little bit of both. And I know that revenue's down, too. If you looked at that page, the supervisor had, uh, pointed that out. Comparison-wise, though, I think we're only fifteen thousand dollars behind year to year, um, so far. And that's all basically in alarm billing. And there was a little delay with our alarm billing, our alarm bills going out. We had to print new envelopes, so that took a little while. So, that money should be coming in over the next few months.
It's interesting to see under the, on the MVAs, motor vehicle accidents, how in April, when everyone was quarantined and home, the numbers were low. And now in May, that everybody's coming out again, the numbers have jumped back up.
Right, they're starting to come back up.
The roads are crowded, actually. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of traffic out there.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to talk about? Beaches, protests, anything like that?
Give us an update. We had, uh, three, uh, oh, I was out there at two of them with you, but, uh, give us an update on, uh, this weekend.
So, protests, I think we've had our fair share. We, back on May thirty-first, we had two. And then last weekend, we had three. We have a walk at the charter school planned for tomorrow at four o'clock. They want to walk from Beconic Riverfront to Town Hall. Uh, they've agreed to walk on the sidewalk, so that shouldn't be a big issue. And then, uh, Stotsky Park, Eric Williams is back again for unity in the community on Saturday, one o'clock.
And that's, uh, how many hours?
Uh, yeah, no, six hours.
Six hours, it's a lengthy.
One to seven, it's a lengthy time, for sure.
Can you send us a spreadsheet of all the ones that are planned so that we know when they are?
Sure.
So that when people start asking us questions about things that they're hearing or reading on social media, if we have questions about it, at least we know that it's happening so that we could.
We only have two, tomorrow and Saturday, but I'll get it, I'll get it out.
And I think it's important that we all stick to the facts. As I, I think on all parts, you can't believe everything you're reading on social media. Yeah.
For sure.
Now, there's, there's a. And Jody, sometimes they pop up, like the day.
Everybody's got a, like. Yeah, so just email.
As much as it hurts.
Or they change the date or something, so.
Yeah, we'll be as current, but sometimes we get pop-ups or we appear the night before, um, this weekend.
Yeah, some of them are planned, others are not so much.
Yes, so.
We'd just like to know, because I know that when it came to walkouts for police officers that were retiring, the town board was told we couldn't come because of the COVID. And with these protests, I know that you try and have as few people there as possible. So, you know, with the butterfly effect project that happened outside the police station, like, that would have been one that I would have liked to come to, but we were told basically that we should be.
The governor still says no more than ten people at a gathering.
Right. So.
I don't know how he says that for gatherings, meanwhile, not so much for protests, so.
Exactly.
I don't understand that, neither does anyone else.
And next week, that, that figure is going to move up to twenty-five.
Twenty-five, uh, we go into phase three on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, so we'll be at twenty-five for a gathering. And indoor dining starts next Wednesday, too.
And from, from what, oh, sorry, Chief.
Go ahead.
I keep thinking you're done. Um, from what I've seen, the people that have been in charge in Riverhead, they, gatherings have been peaceful and I've seen our police department doing a really good job, too, in keeping everything calm and making sure everyone's safe, which I appreciate. But just because you brought up social media, I think in our community, we've all got to be careful. There's a lot of, there's a lot of high emotion right now and, um, I see a lot of mean comments on articles and mean back and forth with people. And I just hope that everybody, um, tries to be more understanding of each other and be a little kinder in these comments.
Right.
I saw. That can escalate things. I saw, actually, a couple of videos of a couple of protests and it wasn't very pleasant where protesters were in police officers' faces yelling at them to take a knee. And when the police officers weren't, it was a little bit of a threatening situation. So, you know, I don't think an officer should take a knee because they're vulnerable when they're on their knees and they're supposed to be standing in that guard.
We, we are a neutral party, so we should not be taking anyone's side at any kind of incident, so.
Right. But I did see a video of someone yelling in a police officer's face to take a knee.
We've had, we've had our, our protests that have had agitated people at, so.
Yeah.
The, uh, the first one, the one back on May thirty-first, they were, was a lot of emotion there.
Yeah, that's what's happening.
And that led to agitation and, you know, I had a, a, I don't know, how, how old she was, a teenager, sit down in front of me, cry that I wanted to kill her and it's like.
Yeah, you brought that up to me and you said that.
I don't know where that even comes from, you know, it's.
Came off, that it took you off guard and surprised you.
It did.
And they just, you know, even with social media, there's so much out there and so many videos and things and you can't even be sure what's real. I'll tend to try to look on all ends and, and check and see if it's real. But, um, I hope that we can get through this in a peaceful way and make some good change, but get through it in a peaceful way.
For sure.
And there's no reason why we can't. And if, if we have to make any adjustments or, or review something, we will. Some of the issues that are being raised in some states, we don't have here in Riverhead.
For sure.
And, uh, it's not a collective, um, unfortunate what happened in Minnesota, no, no one. There, there is no law enforcement officer that would ever condone that.
That's right.
Uh, however, we also have to understand that, uh, what might happen in one state doesn't necessarily happen in Riverhead. And wherever we need to make adjustments or reach out to the community and speak to the community, that'll be done. But it's not a cookie cutter that you have to reform the entire system in every state and every town. And it will work on that and myself and the chief will be working on that effort and we'll get the board involved.
We have a list going already, so, some ideas that, you know, be helpful to change, so.
Yes.
And what I like that you've been doing, well, of course, I liked your letter that you put out, which was good. And I like that you continually say, my door is open, call me, talk to me. And I think that that's a great starting place and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I think you're doing a great job. And I think that all of our men and women are doing a great job also. And I think that it's important to, uh, let everybody know that we respect the protests and it's your right to protest. But at the same time, our officers are instructed to not take a knee. So, don't take it personal, don't get offended by it. Our officers are instructed not to take a knee, not to take a side.
It's very stressful for them, too, so.
And not like, uh, take Suffolk County Police Department, our offices live here. Their kids go to school.
Right, that's right.
They, they are part of our community. And that's why we're Riverhead and Riverhead Strong.
And I think that's very helpful to Riverhead. We know our police officers, I was saying. They sit by us at Stotsky Park, we go to church with them and that's what's nice about having a local police department.
Okay, this wraps up, uh, with discussion items. Can I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss, uh, personnel matters surrounding the terms and conditions of an employee? Can I have a first and a second?
First.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Third.
All in favor?
Fourth.
All opposed? So will, thank you.